Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, impetuous, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special event applications.
The first application is from Governor, uh, Governor Senator Nicole Powell's office. She uses the senior center for an expungement clinic. Next is Jersey Shore Rescue Mission. Tuesdays at the turf, they're requesting to use a transportation center in case of rain. Mind Travel would like to do the silent concert on the beach on August 21st. Heck Street Block Party on September 10th. Bond Street Block Party on September 10th. The Asbury Park Punk Rock Flea Market on October 2nd. Zombie Walk is requesting the date of October 8th. Shoreline Heart Walk on October 23rd. A Day of the Dead Parade on the Boardwalk on November 6th. Santa Run on December 3rd, and One Wedding on September 3rd. Are there any questions on the applications? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leisha.
We are on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
So on this Saturday, there'll be a Family Day at the Beach from noon till 5:00, where there'll be surf lessons, beach games, live music, ocean safety, snacks, and fun. It's free of charge for community members, family members, children in our community. Also, on August 10th, there'll be a Coffee with the Councilperson at Macro Bites. At 10 o'clock, it'll be Jesse Kendall and myself, meeting with anyone who has any questions or concerns. And this is also the last few days to submit an idea for our participatory budgeting. July 31st is the deadline. Then everyone who submits an idea will have the opportunity to present their ideas at a town hall meeting for the community to vote on these ideas for projects. So if you haven't done so, please submit some ideas. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes, thank you. On Tuesday, August 2nd, is the annual National Night Out celebration, and it's going to be in Springwood Park from 5:00 to 8:00. And it's a great event, so everybody should come out and bring their families. And then also, this weekend and next weekend, the Quality of Life Committee is continuing their summer spruce up. So for this weekend, the dumpsters will be available on Monroe Avenue near the Boys and Girls Club, and that's for July 30th and 31st. And the following weekend, they'll be located on Grand Avenue south of First, next to the library. And that's August 6th and 7th. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, excuse me. Aline, I just want to give you and the foundation a big shout out for what you're doing this year. There's so many people come away from the park on Monday night full of joy. There was one particular group that came by, and I have to tell us, two ladies, she said, "You know, I haven't been this happy since my divorce." And I had to ask her how many years, she said 15, so pat on the back to you guys.
Well, I'm glad we can make people happy.
There's also, as Yvonne said, the Turf Club, and that's on a Tuesday. Try to support that if you can also. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Uh, I'm just gonna say, I used the dumpster thing last week. It was great, yeah. It was fantastic, so kudos to the quality of life. Thank you.
Mayor Moore.
I'll just, a little bit more on Family Fun Day, Saturday on 8th Avenue Beach. This is put on by the city, the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, and Surf Riders. And the lead from Surf Riders is Diana, and I call her Marco Polo Pidditch. She travels the world. She's all over the place. But this weekend, she's gonna be there. It's a great time. Destiny from the Boys and Girls Club is gonna be doing some outrageous stuff, helping, everybody having a great day. So that's a great event. And the same day, at Springwood Avenue Park, from like 12:00 to 9:00, Jesse Stevens, a city employee at DPW, rents the park. He's a DJ, and he's raising money for book bags, and he's raised money in the past for coats. Just a great event, so anybody gets a chance, stop over to Jesse's event Saturday at Springwood Avenue Park from 12:00 to 9:00. That's all I have. Thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney. We are on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Members of the public who wish to be heard, you can please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have three minutes.
Hey, guys. Stephanie Williams, 1357 Third Avenue, Real House. I'm president of Asbury Park American Youth Football and Chair. We currently have over 150 kids. Right now, I'm practicing at the middle school. I'm going to request that if we can get some cops, like more cop presence over there, or police presence, just riding through, because some of our parents, they feel a little unsafe. The other thing I wanted to just put on record, we need funding, we need help, because annually, we're servicing over 150 kids. I don't really know how the funding breaks down. I have been in touch with Ms. Floyd, I will say that. But I'm not really in depth with how the funding breaks down. But I just wanted to go on record to let everybody know that we are active, we are dealing with the most at-risk part of our community, and the most at-risk area of our community. And it would be, it would do us a great service if we could just see some of you guys coming out, and if we could have more police presence to make our parents and our kids feel safer. We actually lost quite a few kids, you know. There's no secret. The violence on that side of town is no secret. But myself, my treasurer is here, Trevor Glenn, 610 Sulu Avenue, Apartment 9T, and my whole board is out there right now. But to have, to see some of our leaders out there, it'll go a very, very long way. I'm hearing about events I didn't know even existed, but I will attend, like the Bookbag Drive in the park, the Family Fun Day on 8th Avenue. I'll be there. We're also in the process of planning those things for ourselves. We have a bowling night on August 6th. That's actually James Fimmelauer's birthday. He's the founder of the organization. We're having a bowling night as a fundraiser at Shorelands. I would like to see you guys come out. I could forward the flyer to whoever I need to. The bowling night is from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., just two hours of open bowling. And that way, you'll get to know the community, the other part of the community even more, of what you're serving. So I just wanted to go on record, introduce myself, or reintroduce myself, I don't know how that goes, but my goal is to turn that side of town around, and I'm gonna need your help. That's all I had to say. And I know it's gonna need an miracle, but it can happen. Thank you.
Do you have a flyer?
Yes, I can send it there.
Would you mind sending it to all of us?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Right, what time do you practice?
We practice from 5:00 to 7:30.
Every day?
Every day.
Seven days?
No, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. We normally have scrimmages, Wednesdays, Saturdays, and our games, of course, on Sundays. So.
And how do?
The schedule will be out, because we had to wait for the big board to confirm the schedule. So when we get the schedule of who we're playing and who we're scrimmaging, I'll forward that to whoever I need to. Probably Ms. Floyd, because I've been probably harassing her, I don't know. But I'll make sure that all correspondence that's needed will make it to your hands.
And how do people donate to your organization? Because this is gonna be on AP-TV, so people will get to see this.
Okay. Asbury Park American Youth Football and Chair, you can reach out to our Secretary for Kia Goodman at apamericanyouthfootballandchair@gmail.com for all donations. And then our treasurer is here. We have a registration table set up. We're currently in the process of setting up our VMOs and things of that nature. The person who preceded me, or followed me, then preceded me, kind of let some things fall by the wayside. So I'm in the process, again, to infrastructure back up and running for Asbury Park American Youth Football and Chair. So all correspondence of how to donate, of how to support, or just your presence, or where you could be, will be out, like within the next two or three days.
Okay, no problem. Can I give you my card? Just because it has my email address on it. So email me, so that I can forward it on to the police chief as far as more police presence.
Okay.
Then anything you have, as far as any flyers, any brochures, any fundraisers that you have. We have a Thursday news blast.
Okay.
That we can send out to like thousands of people in the city and the immediate area. So we can help you get any advertisements you want also. So there's a lot of things we can do besides money to help you. So that's no problem. I'll definitely stop by, watch the practice. I was All-American Pop Warner. Then I had a problem. I didn't grow. So in high school, in high school, I had to tackle Philville piano. I said, "I quit." Weighing 85 pounds was one thing. Going against somebody 180 was something else. But I mean, so I loved it. It was some of my best, funnest days of my life. Anything we can do to help, we will help. I'll get you that information as far as, I'll definitely forward it to the police chief. But shoot me an email, never text me. I'm not good at texting. My phone number, home, city, cell, everything's on there. Anything you need. But again, any advertisements you want to get out as far as the bowling night and stuff like that, we can post and help you need to get the word out. And we will do that.
Thank you.
I think Leisha's got something.
And Steve, I just wanted to mention that hopefully we'll be having a recreation meeting in August, and your proposal will be on that agenda for the Recreation Advisory Committee to consider and make recommendations to make.
All right. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the work you guys are doing. And like you say, how many children?
152.
That's fantastic.
That's awesome.
It's fantastic. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Annette Harrell. I reside on the west side of Asbury Park. I am here today to speak about previous meetings that I've been to, and I have addressed certain situations, and I haven't gotten a complete answer. One of them is the letter that I presented to you. The last time I was here, I never gotten a response nor a call on that letter to be addressed or any type of meeting with the city manager as well as you guys. So that's one of the questions. The second thing is, there are multiple shootings now that's occurring. And we basically have a police department that needs to step up. I mean, they, I know that they're out there to protect and serve, but we're not seeing that all the way. I'm not saying they're not doing their jobs. They may be doing it to the best of their ability. But if they need more staff, or whatever it is that they need, they should be provided that, to make it better for the places that these events are occurring. Now, the other thing I wanted to address was the fact that we have a bus, and we've spoke about this in private meetings as well, with Mr. Moore. And that bus is very dangerous on coming down Atkins Avenue. We have children that go across the street constantly to go to that store. Some of them are parenting, some of them are not. So that's a risk. And not only that, there's excessive speeding on that street on Saturdays and Sundays, Fridays. It's overwhelming. Not that it doesn't happen everywhere else, but over there, there are a lot of children over there, and the first concern should be that. Now, I know that the city gets a lot of money that comes in grants and different other things that you guys get. And again, I addressed this before. It shouldn't be where there's a choice, or we have to come and ask you to help us with certain things, when you guys, I feel, should be out there looking and seeing and observing things to see what is going on that you can help us with. Because I feel like a lot of times when I come, that's what it adds up to, that I'm always seeking or asking for this and that. If we are supposed to join together, then that goes both ways. Just as well as I come to you guys, y'all should come out to us too. And I'm not just saying one little meeting at the park. I'm talking about constantly coming out to people and not being afraid to knock on doors and talk to people like they're people. The park as well. They can come over and park where we're at and take up our parking spaces where we reside, but we can't do that when we come on this side. So I don't know how that works with the park, with the concerts and everything, but they do do that. And that is a problem for us as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harrell. As far as the letter you gave to us about Ms. Viero, I think Ms. Viero wants to talk to you. She's on vacation now, so she's not here. I'm sure she would address it tonight. So that would be either soon she gets back or at the next public meeting when you attend. We have talked to New Jersey Transit. I've talked to Mr. Banano, who's our transportation planner, to talk to them again as far as the buses speeding. Something we try to stay on top of. I've talked to the police chief as far as getting the flashing signals, the speed limit on Springwood and Atkins, if that's where the bus goes, right?
Yeah, it comes down.
Right.
Springwood and.
Springwood and Atkins. So we rotate those throughout the town. Police chief was in, includes exec earlier with us, and he was gonna move them, so I'll make sure that these addresses are added to it.
Because that street is so tight. It's just, that's the problem. It's scary, it's so tight over there.
It is, but it's, New Jersey Transit trumps us. New Jersey Transit is shutting down 6th Avenue Railroad, crossing and saying, "Tough, you can't do anything about it. We can do whatever we want." We are the law. We can't fight them. So we can complain, we can complain to our senator, our assembly people, we can complain to Donna, the chair, I forget how to pronounce her last name, and bring these to her attention, which we have in the past and will continue to do. But buses should not be speeding. And you're right, it is a tight turn, but that's the route they chose because of ridership for the community. I think I hit just about everything you asked. As far as functions, I think we're all as many functions as we can be at. Knocking on doors, sometimes people, sometimes when somebody knocks on my door, I don't answer it. I'm like, "Leave me alone, I'm watching TV." But I understand what you're saying. We can get out more, and we'll try. Thank you. What was? Parking?
Concerts and the parking.
Parking is a problem throughout the entire city, but we didn't build a park not to use it. So I mean, you know, I don't know what, I've gone, I haven't been to many of the concerts this year because of the same night as Planning Board, and we've had a Planning Board meeting every Monday night. But every time I've gone over there, I've had no problem finding a parking spot without going into a residential area. Park behind where Second Baptist is, or on Springwood up a block and walk. But I've never had to like park, I know where you live, I've never had to park like.
On Atkins?
Right. I've never had to park in front of.
They take that whole strip.
I've never had to park in front of AP Village whatsoever. And now with the new condos going up, it's gonna get worse. So there's no question about it. Parking's gonna be a nightmare on the west side, same as it is on the east side.
Not so, I bet the difference. They have private park, they have their own parking lots, so it won't be as bad for them as it is for us. It's a difference.
Okay. Point noted. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Sylvia Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Nice to see you all. I had just a couple of things. First, I wanted to make sure that I commented on the waterfront during the season. As you know, it obviously swells with our visitors, and our Beach Authority and DPW has been unbelievable. It, I think honestly, this is, and they always do a great job, but it is cleaner and just more magnificent than I've seen like in the past years. It really, it's very welcoming for everybody, and it represents Asbury Park really well over there. I wasn't here after the 4th of July fireworks, but I wanted to make sure that I had at least acknowledged and commented on those fireworks. That was the best display I've seen anywhere, ever. They were spectacular, and I stood on Third and Kingsley. So right before the finale, I was able to see Sergeant Dello was there with his team, and right before the finale, I watched them all go. I didn't even know how this worked. They all got into place for the traffic that would be then moving out after the fireworks were over. I don't think it took anybody more than a couple of minutes to get, to aim westward from there. They really were like a well-oiled machine. So I had those things. But then also, as I always do, I get a little sidetracked. I'm glad to hear that Jesse Stevens got his, his program is going through there. He had, we had spoken about it a few times, and it sounded like something that was really gonna be fantastic, so I'm excited for that. And I'll have to reach out and see if there's anything you can help him with. But then Steve, Steve, I'm sorry, the football. If there's any, like, and always feel free to pass my information over to nonprofits like you. I can, I don't have as much reach to the residential community, but that gets covered by the city. But I can communicate to the businesses for you if you need, because it's a very supportive and driven business community. And they, and most of them, they also live here. So there's always an opportunity. If you need something, that I might be able to get it done for you, and I can help you fill out stuff. Like I can do stuff. And my office is right there on the west side. Like I live there more than, at my house, right there in the Business Development Center. So I just wanted to mention that. And also, we have the partnership with the radio station, with the city and New Jersey Natural Gas. So, and we get to promote nonprofits and stuff there. So if you have the stuff that you send over to the council, if you would pass it, if the council would pass it over to me as well, maybe I can have Tom Hayes speak about that on one of the broadcasts. That was actually perfect timing, I was done.
Okay, well, wait a second. Sylvia, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Yes.
There's the gentleman. You got control of the radio station. Get him on the radio before the end of the summer.
I can definitely get, I can get his program promoted, but I don't know yet if they're having people talk because they don't want to share like the microphones and stuff since COVID. But I can, I can definitely get the program promoted. And Tom doesn't, you know, Tom does a magnificent job repeating it throughout the time he sits in there. And hopefully sometime we'll come back to being able to have actual interviews with people. But it's just a matter of sharing and like germs and stuff.
Okay, fantastic. So.
I do, I'll give you my card over there.
And that's another thing.
I will get that, yeah.
I'm happy you came tonight. There's all these other ways that people can help. And Sylvia, Sylvia's fantastic with the Chamber of Commerce, helping people, so.
It's my pleasure. And I don't know if they know about National Night Out. That's something that might be a good place for exposure as well.
Right. So if you guys want to attend there, if you're not having practice, which you are, but National Night Out is Tuesday, the 2nd.
Yeah.
And it's a well-attended event. You can set up a table, whatever you want to do. Okay.
I have the application for that that goes to Casey at the police department. I can pass that over to you. So they have, they put you in the places that you need to be. So, you know, I'm happy to help you out with that. All right, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Diane Shelton. I live at 1201 Springwood Avenue. I just want to provide some information. I understand that you had problems with your air. I just want you to know that the library is still having problems, so I wanted to make a public announcement that we will only be open from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 until we get the necessary parts in, as they tell them, they're on their way. So I just wanted that as a public announcement. Of two, I just want to thank, it's the Asbury Park Music Foundation and Councilwoman Aline for allowing Asbury Park Scott Talent to perform both last Monday and this coming Monday, those who were winners of the Asbury Park Scott Talent. In addition, I did, just in case you do not know, working on a third mural. That mural on the west side will be at the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Summer Camp started July 5th, and on the 8th started their, what do you call it? Arts Club, which is part of the camp. And the youth have been, had designed for three weeks. They worked together with our commissioned artists, Jason, and thank you. Oh, sorry, I just went blank. Amy, thank you. Because the music, I mean, the Public Arts Commission, they had approved this, and we have been moving forward. The youth have had their three classes. They have done their sketches, sketches. And we're ready to send it to the Arts Commission. And we just need a little help. I'm trying to reach out to, I have reached out to DPW, because the only thing we do not have, and we're trying to get, is some kind of way, a scaffold. And we're hoping DPW has it. But they will start on, on the outside of the mural on August 3rd. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations and good luck. And if you want to shoot me an email, if you want to just call Sonia Speedin tomorrow and have her put out a nixle about your library hours, as much as when our air conditioner went down, we put it out to the town, let them know we have the reduced hours. So if you want us to get that out on a nixle, you can call Sonia tomorrow and get that posted, and that'll be sent out to everybody also. But yeah, the nixle goes to more people and everything. And ours is finally back on today. So we're hoping it stays on.
And Diane, thank you for opportunities to our children in both arts and music, and bringing those cultural activities to the children of Asbury Park.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard?
Move to close.
Move to close.
Second.
Just said that.
All in favor? The public comment portion of the meeting is now closed. We are on to the minutes. I have the Municipal Council Executive Meeting of July 13, 3:30 p.m. The Municipal Council Regular Meeting of July 13, 6 p.m. Looking for a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 22-3, sorry, 22-337, a resolution approving special events applications.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2022-338, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Before I take a roll call vote, I will let the members of the public know that PO number 22-01503 and PO 22-00891 have been removed from the payment of bills resolution.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 22-339, a resolution accepting donations from Michael Antonis of Wacky Tabacky, Ken Sigler of Eby King, New Jersey, Adam of Yes Graphics, and NJ Photo Works for the Asbury Park Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
We're on 339.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
I did, yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-340, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 sewer budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, American Rescue Plan.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-331, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2022 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159, Mental Health Services Additional Funds.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-342, a resolution canceling balances of grant receivables and grants appropriated.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-344, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-345, a resolution appointing muralists to paint murals on the City of Asbury Park wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-346, a resolution to authorize a grant application from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the purchase of a new oxygen generator for the fire department.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 22-347, a resolution authorizing an appointment to the Housing Authority. Nina Summerlin is the appointee.
Move it. Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Are there any additional comments before we move on to adjournment?
Move to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.